Okay, looks like it's 6:30, so I'm going to begin the meeting. As a preliminary matter, my name is Mary Beth Lynch. I am the chairperson. Please permit me to confirm that all members and staff are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lisa Cosette.
Here.
Peter Mulcahy.
Here.
Patrick Fulon.
Yeah.
Matt Armenti.
Yeah.
And Kevin Nisbet.
Here.
Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bernard Cahill.
Present.
Rowan McAllister.
Present.
And Kristin Rapolo.
Present.
Thank you. Good evening. This open meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive orders of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the Corona-19 virus. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public commentary. For this meeting of the zoning board of appeals, it's convened by telephone conference and video conference via Google Hangout, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Let's discuss the meeting ground rules, if we will. We're now turning to the first agenda item. We do have 13 items on our agenda this evening, so it's a busy night. Before we do so, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'm Mary Beth Lynch, and Lisa Cosette will be taking over for the first hearing. We will introduce each board member or staff member who has a lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with the item on the agenda. After concluding their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members. The chair will, I'm sorry. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute or unmute your phone by pressing *6, or mute your computer when you are not speaking as to not trigger your camera feed or background noise. For public commentary, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. The chair will ask each member of the public who wishes to speak to identify themselves, giving their name and address only. Once the chair has a list of all public comments, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For any responses, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the chair. Take in great care to identify yourself, please. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted via roll call. Before we begin the official meeting, we have a couple items of housekeeping. We've got some bills that we need to pay. We've got $140 Worcester Telegram and Gazette bill from March 29th, 2021, to serve as legal notices. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the bill as read.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye, so moved. Second is a $322 bill to the Worcester Telegram and Gazette for April 26th, 2021, legal notices. Please entertain a motion to approve the bill as read.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So, I'm sorry, I've got one more bill for $27.94 to WB Mason for office supplies. Like to entertain a motion to approve the bill as read.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye, so moved. I will now recuse myself for the first hearing. Lisa Cosette will take over as vice chair, and Kevin Nisbet will serve as an alternate in my absence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. On remand from the Massachusetts Land Court on whether the property located at 196 Grafton Street in the Residence A District may be used as a two-family dwelling as pre-existing non-conforming use in accordance with GLC 40A 6 and the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 4A. After the public hearing, the board will render a written decision which either amends, adopts, or supersedes the board's prior decision. The public hearing for 196 Grafton Street is a new public hearing. Can I ask Attorney McKay with the town to provide an overview of the appeal?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. My name is Dave McKay. I am town counsel for the Towne or Shrewsbury, along with Steve Medals, and I have been representing the town and the zoning board of appeals on two appeals that were brought before the land court related to a decision that this board issued. I don't have the date of the original decision in front of me, but well more than a year ago with respect to a zoning enforcement action that had been taken by the building inspector related to this particular property. And the building inspector concluded that the property was not a pre-existing non-conforming use. And there was a hearing in front of this board at which time the board entered its decision affirming the enforcement order by the building inspector. Mr. Wallace took two appeals from that decision, one of which was that the decision itself was incorrectly entered. And then he took a second appeal, asking the court to require the town clerk to issue a constructive approval of his appeal, arguing that this board failed to take action on his prior appeal, notwithstanding the fact that the board did, in fact, issue a written decision on the appeal. So those matters have been pending before the land court for some time. With the town manager and the assistant town manager, as well as the board of selectmen, we had engaged with Mr. Wallace's counsel, I should say, about a potential resolution of this matter. And we ultimately arrived at a settlement agreement, which has been approved by this board and also by the town manager and the board of selectmen. The settlement agreement includes, as a component of it, that the board will consider and enter an amended decision along the lines of what has been submitted to you as the amended decision. In essence, what the amended decision allows is for Mr. Wallace to continue using the property as a pre-existing non-conforming use, and that he'll do that in accordance with conditions, several conditions, one to four, that have been outlined in the amended decision. By way of a little bit of background, one of the issues that concerned the town with respect to this particular property was that it had been used as a two-family dwelling, and there was some question as to whether or not the property complied with the building code and with the sanitary code, particularly because one of those units was being rented out to a tenant. So we wanted to make certain that the life, health, and safety issues were well addressed, and the agreement provides for a procedure for actions and any necessary repairs within certain prescribed time periods so that we'll have that level of comfort that the property complies with the sanitary code and with the building code. And so that's the nature of the amended decision. And ultimately, it'll be to this board to decide whether or not to accept that amended decision. And the record of the vote is set forth with a proposed motion in the decision itself to allow the property to be used as a two-family dwelling, and that such use is a pre-existing non-conforming use as a two-family dwelling as of June 19th, 1969, which is the date of the adoption of the zoning bylaw in accordance with NGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, and the zoning bylaw, specifically Section 4A, all subject to and in accordance with the conditions that I just described a moment ago.
Thank you so much, Attorney McKay, for that explanation. Does the applicant or their representative have anything to add before we move on?
Hello, my name is Julie McNeil. I represent Stephen Wallace. What Attorney McKay said was accurate, except I do want a couple of little, I think they were just misstatements. He was saying the sanitary code and the building code, but I think it's the sanitary code and the fire code. That's in the agreement. And also, I think he said 1969, but it's 1967 is the date of the, but that's all accurately stated in the settlement agreement and the agreement for judgment.
Okay. Attorney McKay, do you want to follow up?
Nope.
Okay.
Ms. McNeil is absolutely right. It is 1967. I misspoke on that point. And she's also right. It's sanitary code and fire code were the two issues we were primarily concerned with.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney McNeil. I will now ask, one at a time, if any board member has any questions or comments for the applicant. And I'm going to go ahead and start with Mr. Mulcahy.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Armenti?
Not at this time.
Mr. Fulon?
I'm good.
And our new member, Mr. Nisbet?
No questions or comments.
Okay, and I, as chair, have no questions as well, so I'll move on. So this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present who have a question or comment? I remind the public to please keep their questions and comments brief and to the point, and to ask them through the speaker. So now we'll wait to see if anyone wants to speak, and please say your name and address.
This is Leland Thomas, 8 Maplewood Road.
Hi, Mr. Thomas. Go ahead.
Great. So yeah, my question is to, you know, just trying to figure out why this is being approved from the perspective of, you know, we're abutting property, and I noticed there's a lot of police activity in that sort of second zoning unit that you're looking to get approved. Lot of trash, property's pretty unkempt. And I think, you know, at least some of the abutting neighbors are certainly looking to sort of see what's going on here with this approval.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. So there was a public hearing previously, as Attorney McKay mentioned, where this property and this appeal was brought forth in two separate hearings, actually, and a decision was rendered at that time. Since then, as Attorney McKay has explained, the appellant has gone through an appeal process, and this is something that happens, actually. I don't want to say often, but it does happen when an appeal occurs. Both parties decide that it is best to settle rather than to continue when the outcome is going to be unknown, and there will be cost involved. I'll turn it over to Attorney McKay, if he would like to add anything.
Sure. I'll add two things. First of all is that part of the reason that we revisited the underlying zoning question is because the primary basis for the board's decision in the first instance was that there weren't records, that there wasn't a record of a prior permit that had been issued pre the zoning bylaw, so before 1967, that established that this was a lawfully granted permit for two units for a two-family dwelling at the time. One of the things that we're concerned about is that while that may be true, that is not necessarily dispositive in the sense that just because a record's not there now in the building department file doesn't mean that it didn't exist at some time. We don't have any evidence to believe that it did exist. On the other hand, that's a disputed issue of fact that would have to get resolved at trial. The second point is that the conditions of the property, I'm sorry, I apologize for the noise in the background. It was an unruly pet. But I think I've secured the object that was causing all the noise. I apologize. This is a first for me in 12 months of doing these hearings via Zoom. This is the worst that it's gotten. So, but the answer to your second question is that the conditions of the property are part of the reason why we insisted upon the specific conditions that are a part of the amended decision, in that we wanted to make sure that the property did comply with the fire code and the sanitary code, and that those kinds of issues can, and not only can be, but would, in fact, be addressed.
Thank you, Attorney McKay. Are there any other members of the public present who have a question or comment? I remind you to unmute and say your name and address. Okay, I don't believe there are any further comment from the public. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So now we will go ahead and close the public hearing and deliberate. If there are any comments from members, feel free to voice your comment or ask your question. I'm going to go around, oh, yeah, sorry.
Just a point of order. I think we have to vote to close the hearing.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's true. So sorry. So I'm going to go around, roll call, and please give your affirmation that you're okay with closing the public hearing. Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Nisbet?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Okay, is there any further comment or deliberation? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Someone just raised their hand, Lisa. Stephen Wallace?
Oh, so, I'm so sorry. You may have had trouble unmuting. We have closed the public hearing. We are now just taking comments from zoning board members. I apologize for that.
Attorney McKay, is it all right if we hear a statement from the appellant? At this, I know that officially we've closed. We have in the past, due to technical difficulties, taken statements if it pertains to the question at hand directly.
Oh.
You're on mute.
Attorney McKay, you're muted.
The answer is yes. If the board wishes to reopen the hearing, it can for the purpose of addressing a technical issue if Mr. Wallace had raised his hand prior to the close of the public hearing.
So Ms. McAllister, who noticed the raised hand? Was it before we closed the meeting?
I think it was during the vote count itself. So I think the board needs to make a decision.
Okay.
He was trying to get through during the vote.
Right. Okay, which was once the motions were already taken. Okay, so I'm just...
I move to reopen the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, I have to do roll call. Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Nisbet?
Aye.
And I say aye. So, Mr. Wallace, so sorry about that. If you can unmute and please make a statement before we go ahead and close the public hearing officially. And...
I want to say it again.
Mr. Wallace, are you able to unmute? And give us your statement?
Mr. Wallace, there should be an unmute button on the bottom left of your screen. You need to click it. We cannot unmute you from our end, unfortunately.
Okay, I'm wondering if...
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Madam Vice Chair. You can also, Mr. Wallace, you can type in your question or statement into the chat box as well. There's a chat function. You can click on that as well if you can't unmute.
Or perhaps speak through Attorney McNeil. Not sure how to do that. We'll give it another 30 seconds or so.
And if you're connected via telephone, you can dial, is it *6?
Okay, we've given it almost another minute. Mr. Wallace, are you there? One last time. All right, I think we're going to go back to entertaining a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? And now we'll roll call again to close the public hearing. Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Nisbet?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. All right, so if there's any discussion, please let me know. Otherwise, I will go ahead and ask a question. So no discussion amongst members? So do I have a motion to approve the amended decision that the ZBA allow Wallace's use of the property in accordance with Section 4A of the zoning bylaw as a two-family dwelling, subject to and in accordance with the conditions as outlined in the draft amended decision?
I move as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? We'll roll call. Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Nisbet?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you. That's the end of 196 Grafton. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cosette. Moving right along. This is, our next hearing is a continuation from our April 26th, 2021, meeting to hear the appeal of 526 Hartford Turnpike, the Point at Hill Farm, which is located in a limited industrial overlay district. Smart Growth Design LLC is the appellant. Modifications to a comprehensive permit granted November 28th, 2016 pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 40B, Section 20 to through 23 of the Massachusetts general law to allow for a reduction in the density of units. The public hearing for 526 Hartford Turnpike, the Point's at Hill Farm comprehensive permit is a continued public hearing. Could the appellant please reintroduce themselves and explain any new findings to the board? Who do we have this evening? Mr. Zaretti?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Excuse me. Franz Zaretti, I'm the applicant, Smart Growth Design LLC. And also online would be Wayne Belik, our project engineer from Land Design Collaborative LLC. And I believe Mr. St. Pierre may be also online, a landowner. This evening, I'm going to do a short agenda, basically qualitative, again as I did last time. And I'm going to give a brief discussion on the traffic update that was requested at the last meeting, and we had our traffic consultant submit an updated report on that. Also noted, at the last meeting, we submitted our consulting engineers, onsite engineering company, reports on the water impacts and the sewer impacts of the 92-unit project formerly known as Phase 2 of the original project, respectively, and what the impacts were on the town offsite infrastructure systems. During the past 30 days since the last meeting, the town peer review consultant, Weston Sampson, and also the consultant, Tater and Howard, did a peer review of our reports on both the sewer and the water, respectively. They were submitted to the town with their own comment letters regarding the infrastructure upgrades. And they also had a few questions for us to address. As the next protocol, our consulting engineers are in the process of completing a highly quantitative, this time, and not qualitative, responses to both of the town peer review letters that were submitted to us. Our findings will be reviewed and discussed within the next two weeks for the technical meeting with the town DPW officials and our engineers. I would assume that the DPW, after this meeting, could possibly issue a letter to the ZBA before the next meeting in June with their recommendations to your board regarding the extent of any offsite upgrades or improvements required in accordance with Chapter 40B regulations and mandates on the revised smaller project related to incremental hydraulic capacity issues and costs associated with those improvements. So again, we've got one more round with this, and then we should finally be able to address these two issues, water and sewer, which is the main reason for coming back to the board with the project change. Now regarding the traffic, quickly. Tetra Tech updated the traffic assessment, and they dated it May 20th, 2021, which I believe the board and the town has received copies of that report. I would like to quickly read two paragraphs on page one and one paragraph on page three of that report regarding the traffic questions that were raised at the end of the last meeting. So let me just briefly get into that report. The first paragraph on page one, I'd like to quote. Tetra Tech has prepared the following transportation assessment update for the currently proposed building program modification due to the previously approved residential development, the Point of Hills Farms, the project in Shrewsbury, Mass. The project was previously approved for the construction of a two-phase residential development with 156 units proposed for 440 Hartford Turnpike, Phase 1, and 92 units proposed for 526 Hartford Turnpike, Phase 2. As currently proposed, only Phase 2, as originally approved, of the project will be moving forward at this time due to the sale of 440 Hartford Turnpike, which is formerly Phase 1, for the purpose now of a buyright commercial development. Going down to the next paragraph beyond that one. As part of this assessment, Tetra Tech conducted a trip generation comparison of the currently proposed building program to the prior proposed building programs. As expected, the current proposed building program of 92 units will generate significantly less traffic. The project proponent is committed to implementing the Phase 2 transportation-related improvements identified during the previous state and local review process while the project and no additional traffic mitigation measures are warranted for the Phase 2 development as a result of the proposed building program modification. The letter documents our findings. I don't want to get into the details, but they did the calculations, and they did these studies. And all the numbers there show the dramatic decrease in the traffic impacts. Finally, and lastly, under the last paragraph on page three, with the conclusions, the currently proposed project consisting of Phase 2 property with 92 units is expected to generate significantly less traffic than the previously approved 248-unit project. It is therefore anticipated that the Phase 2 assessment improvements identified as part of the previous state and local review of the project will be more than sufficient to accommodate the currently proposed project. It is anticipated that the appropriate site access and potential offsite improvements associated with 440 Hartford Turnpike, formerly Phase 1 at the Point of Hills Farm, will be determined under a separate application should the current owner of the property move forward with the development of that property. We trust that this information would prove useful to the town over the current review of the project. So I think that was my say on regarding the sewer and water, which will be coming up to bat at the next meeting. And I believe we adequately addressed the traffic questions that were raised last time by having this amended report submitted to the board. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zaretti. At this point, I'd like to ask Bernie Cahill or Rowan McAllister if you have any comments.
I would actually, Madam Chair, Town Engineer Andy Truman is present this evening. So I'd like to ask yourself to recognize him and see if he has any response or comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy Truman. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, I think at this point, as Mr. Zaretti outlined, we kind of need to get our two peer reviewers sitting down with their engineer just to outline, you know, the couple of outstanding issues that we have on the water and sewer infrastructures. As far as traffic, I think we're all set at this point. As I say, substantial reduction in traffic, but there are still some outstanding issues that hopefully we will have resolved before the next meeting on the water and sewer infrastructure upgrades.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. I'm going to work our way through the board to see if we have questions or comments at this point. Can we start with Lisa Cosette, please?
Sure, thank you. I had a number of questions actually for town engineering, but we'll hold it off until two weeks from now when we get an update from you. And I bet you all of those will be answered. And to the appellant, I apologize. I'm the one who asked for more traffic information. Thank you very much for providing that. I wanted to confirm that, and I couldn't recall. I wanted to confirm that no Phase 2 road improvements at the time really took into account the improvements that were proposed for Phase 1. So I was a little concerned that they were kind of interrelated, but thank you for that update. I'm now fine with that as well. So thank you for all your efforts. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy, comments, questions?
Sure, I just had one question from the materials. It's a question for both Mr. Zaretti and Mr. Truman. On the second page of the TATA and Howard letter, under site plans, the updated site plans for the proposed development were not included with the updated supplemental. I was wondering why not and if that matters.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't know if they were forwarded to them. I think substantively that the site plans haven't changed. So I think we told them, you know, essentially what's being built is the same. It's really just about the water demands, fire, and domestic needs. They were really looking at those needs. And I believe that Onsite had forwarded their anticipated water needs for the development. So there was really no need to reissue the site plans. They already kind of had them on record.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Patrick, any questions, comments?
Nothing right now.
Thank you. Mr. Armenti, questions, comments?
I'm okay right now, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I too have no further questions or comments. Given that this is a public hearing, going to open it up to see if there's any members of the public who wish to be heard. And if you do wish to be heard, please keep your comments to a minimum, if you don't mind. And also make sure you identify name and address. So I'm going to give this a couple of seconds to, if you want to use or raise the hand, that would be great, or just let us know you're out there and if you have anything to say. Okay, given that there are no comments from the public, is there a motion to continue the hearing?
Motion to continue.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy.
Aye.
Mr. Fulan?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so moved. Thank you very much. On to our next hearing, is to hear the appeal 20 Centec Boulevard in the Rural B District. We have representation from the Shrewsbury Fire Department, and they are applying for a special permit to Section 7, Table 1, to replace an existing 60-foot radio tower with a 150-foot radio tower. And I'm not sure who we have here from the fire department, but if you could let us know?
Yes, it's Joseph Milos from the fire department, along with Deputy Chief Colby. Very good, thank you.
Great.
So the town is in process right now of updating the radio system that we have. Part of that update requires changing the tower down at the Centec Fire Station. So there is an existing tower there right now. It's a smaller unit. It's about 60 feet tall. The problem with that is, is as the landfill has been gaining elevation from all of the ash that's been going in over there, the tower is not of sufficient height to do the job that we needed to do anymore. So the new system was engineered out for the coverage that we need, and the tower that's down there needs to be raised up actually over, a little over twice the height it is now, 150 feet, which is the, basically, the smallest tower that will do what we need it to do. We did submit a drawing to the zoning board for review. It shows where the new tower is going to be built, which is directly behind the fire station where the existing one is. It's about 10 feet to the left, if you were standing at the back of the building, as to where the existing tower is now. The diagram that is up right now shows the proposed tower site with the dot in the middle as being the center of where the tower is going to be. There is no added structures or any added areas being, all of the equipment itself is being housed in the building. So the only thing that's actually being added is going to be the tower itself behind the station.
Thank you, Mr. Milos. Do we have commentary from Ms. McAllister?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go through the board and see if we have questions or comments. Let's start with Lisa, please.
No questions from me.
Thank you. Peter?
Nothing from me, just interested to hear from neighboring.
Patrick Fulan?
Yeah, I looked into that, and I don't believe that it would really be an eyesore anywhere. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Mr. Armenti, questions, comments?
Nothing from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I do have a question myself, just with regard to worst-case scenario. When you talk about the radio, it not being big enough, for lack of a better word, could you just, so could you just give me a little bit more background on what that means exactly?
Sure. So the way the radio waves, so to speak, work, as they come off of an antenna, they travel in a straight line until they run into an object. And then they'll either go around or stop when they hit that object. The problem right now down at Centec is, as all of that, the earth to the right has been raised, as they've gone through the different phases that the landfill is going through, it's going to be about 140 feet higher than the ground is right now at that station. So the 150 feet puts it so that the waves would be able to just go over the top of that landfill that's going in there. What that does is that allows coverage to the whole east side of town. So all the residents down on Arch Street, Green Street behind it, White Hall, all the Amherst, all the smaller developments and stuff down that side. And anything that is going to be built east of town in order to get good radio coverage that's at acceptable level for safety-wise, it requires the tower to be brought up to that height. So that's why we're increasing the height of the tower down there.
Thank you, and I thank you for pointing out the specific areas of town that would be affected by this. Given that this is a public hearing, I'm going to open it up to commentary by the public. Ask that you keep your comments brief and identify yourself by name and address. Can you use the raise your hand or let us know that you're out there, and we would be happy to listen? Okay. Given that there are no public comments, I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye, so moved. Can I, any objections to all or part of the application, please? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm reading off something else. So we're going to need a motion to approve the special permit to construct a 150-foot radio tower at 20 Centec Boulevard.
Motion to approve as stated.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth? Aye, so moved. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next hearing, to hear the appeal of 54 Tanegar Drive in the Residence B1 District. Stephanie Gannas is the homeowner. She's looking to get a special permit for Section 4B to construct a deck on an existing non-conforming dwelling. Mrs. Gannas, are you out there?
Yes.
Wonderful. I'm going to give you some time to introduce yourself and explain your application to the board, please.
Okay, my name is Stephanie Gannas. I have my carpenter, Jim Zeko, here. He can explain if you don't mind, because I have no idea what we're going to say. Okay.
Hi, Jimmy Zeko, 34 Kinglet Drive, Shrewsbury. We're just looking to build a 12-by-28 deck off the back of the house, staying within the footprint of the house, not extending beyond either side, as you can see in the plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zeko. Ms. McAllister, anything further to add?
I'll just point out that this is existing non-conforming because of that front yard setback. It's 26 when it should be 30. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, let's work our way through the board, see if we have questions or comments. Ms. Cosette?
I have no questions. I see that there's no change to the existing front yard nonconformance, so I have no issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy?
My stance is basically the same. I know in the past, we've required applicants to submit a certified plot plan, but I understand that the building department might require that anyway, in this case, for building permits. So that would be my only answer.
Thank you. Mr. Fulan?
None, I got nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Armenti?
Nothing from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, and I too am fine. This is a public hearing. Given that, I'm going to open it up to anyone that would like to be heard on this matter. If you'd like to raise your hand, let us know you're out there. Give it a few seconds. Okay, going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close.
Thank you. So a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. I need a motion to approve the waiver. We also need a motion to approve the waiver request not to provide a certified plot plan. Can I get that motion, please?
So moved, as stated.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye, so moved. I need a motion to approve a special permit to construct a deck, construct a deck at 54 Tanegar Drive.
Motion to approve as stated.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye, so moved. Thank you very much. Ms. Gannas and Mr. Zekos.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next hearing, to hear the appeal for 37 Patton Drive, located in Residence B1. Greta and Daniel Ogden are the homeowners. They're applying for a special permit to Section 4B and Section 6, Table 2, to construct an addition and deck to an existing non-conforming dwelling. This is a public hearing. Could the appellants please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board?
Madam Chairperson, this is Attorney Diana Slade, and I represent the appellants.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the committee. We are seeking a special permit for a proposed project to the subject property 37 Patton Road. The work that is being thought to be completed is a lateral addition to the rear of the current building and also a deck to the rear of the building. And a special permit is required because this property has been deemed pre-existing nonconform pursuant to Section 7B of the zoning bylaw. The building on the subject property, as you'll see in the certified plot plan, thank you, Rowan, for bringing that up, you'll see that it's 26 feet and 8 inches from the property line, and the bylaw requires that the building be 30 feet from the property line in the front. You'll notice from the plot plan that the proposed addition and the proposed deck addition does not increase the existing nonconformity and is within the footprint of the home. So the issues here are simply to add on this addition, which will not affect the front face of the house, as well as the deck, which will not affect the front face of the house. We believe that the special permit is appropriate in this instance because it's in harmony with the intent of the bylaw, which is a residential use. The owners of the current property, Dan and Greta Ogden, are looking to continue to make this a residential use. It's appropriate to the location in the neighborhood and the neighboring properties that all have either some type of deck or addition. It's not adding to the topography of the area. There's not a significant environmental impact to this area. The project is being completed by Ben Keller, who is a local to Shrewsbury. He's a resident of the town and is a licensed contractor. So he will be conforming to all of the appropriate laws and building code regulations. It will not create a nuisance. And as far as public good and the support of the neighborhood, the appellants have actually submitted a statement of support from the adjacent and abutting neighbors to the property. So there's no objection from any of the neighbors in this subject property to the proposed addition and the proposed deck that's being constructed upon approval of the special permit. And the appellants did provide every signer of the petition to support them a copy of what exactly was being built. So we appreciate your time and hope you approve the special permit.
Thank you, Attorney Slade. Appreciate that. Ms. McAllister, any further commentary?
I don't have anything more to add. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I'd like to work our way through the board, see what comments or questions we have, starting with Lisa, please.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Peter Mulcahy, questions, comments?
Same as previous. It doesn't make any of the nonconformities any worse. It's within the building and below.
Thank you. Patrick?
Nothing from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Armenti?
No questions or concerns, Madam Chair.
Wonderful, and I would applaud Ms. Sladen on her presentation. And I have no further comments or questions as well, given that this is.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Given that this is a public hearing, I'm going to open it up for comments, questions from the public. And if you could identify yourself by name and address, we'd appreciate it. I'm going to give you a couple of seconds to do so. Okay, I think, I hope we've given enough time. Is there a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye? Okay, I need a motion to approve a special permit to construct an addition and deck at 37 Patton Road.
Motion to approve as stated.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter? Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. So moved. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Onto our next public hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Brian and Victoria Thibodeau, 15 Eastwood Road, Residence B1 District. This is for a special permit to Section 4B to construct a second-story addition to an existing nonconforming dwelling. Given that this is a new public hearing, could the appellant please introduce themselves and explain your application to us, please?
Madam Chairperson, this is Attorney Diana Slayden. Again, you have the pleasure of hearing my voice on this application as well. My name's Diana Slayden. I represent Victoria and Brian Thibodeau, who have applied for this special permit. And this project is also being managed by Benjamin Keller, as well, from Keller Construction in Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. The appellant are seeking a special permit for the construction of a two-story, or excuse me, a second story to their current single-family detached resident on the subject property. You'll see on the certified plot plan that the proposal is going to be in the footprint of the house. You'll notice that there is a proposed deck and porch by way of clerical error that was omitted from this application, and we'll be filing a subsequent special permit application for the construction of the deck, as that was omitted. So that will be filed and hopefully heard at a future meeting. But for purposes of this application, the issue here is that the property is considered pre-existing nonconforming as well due to the proximity of the building from the front property line, and it's not in compliance with Section 7B. There is a proper distance between the front line and the back, and where the building is situated does not conform, and therefore, we are seeking a special permit so that they can expand their home in Shrewsbury. Similarly to the last property, the, excuse me, my five-year-old just walked into the room. One second, sorry about that. Hearings at home are difficult. The proposed use is in harmony with the intent of the bylaw, which is residential. And so there's no intent to make this a commercial use or to make it a two-family property. The proposed use is appropriate in the sense that there are two-story homes on Eastwood Road in Shrewsbury. There won't be any significant environmental impact or nuisance as it pertains to noise or odor or any type of traffic or inciteliness. And again, much like the last appellant, they have submitted a statement of support from their neighbors. At the time of the filing of the appeal, we did not have the proposed certified plot land, but that has been submitted as it's on the screen today. So there was previously filed a waiver request, but we're going to withdraw that request as the plot plan has been submitted.
Thank you, Attorney Slayden. Ms. McAllister, any further commentary?
Just confirm with the appellant's counsel that the scope of the project was not accurately represented in the legal notice fully, so we will be moving forward in the future, as she stated, with only the porch. So again, this is just today for the second-story addition, but I have no further comments.
Thank you. Given that this is a public hearing, I'm sorry, let's open it up to the board first. I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself here. Let's start with Lisa. Any comments, questions?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy?
Nothing from me, same as the previous two.
Thank you. Mr. Fulen?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Armenti?
All set, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I too am fine. No comments or questions from me. So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand. Let us know you're out there. Going to give a couple of seconds for anyone that needs it. Okay, there being no public commentary, may I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second? Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulen?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. So let's get a motion to approve the special permit to construct a second-story addition at 15 Eastwood Road.
Motion to approve as stated.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulen?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
And Ms. Lynch, aye. So moved. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, could you also vote to withdraw the waiver?
Sorry about that.
Before we move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to withdraw, please? Withdraw the-
Motion to withdraw the plot plan waiver request?
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulen?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch, aye. So moved. Thank you very much. Onto our next hearing for this evening to hear the appeal of Patrick Tito from 11 Ferncroft Road, located in Residence B1 District. This is for a special permit to Section 4B to construct an addition to an existing nonconforming dwelling. This is a public hearing. Could the appellant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board?
Good evening. Once again, this is Attorney Diana Slayden on behalf of the appellant Lawrence Tito. This will be the last presentation I make this evening, and thank you for putting them all together for me. It's much appreciated. The subject property is 11 Ferncroft Road. Thank you, Rowan, for bringing up the property map. The work that is seeking to be completed is a lateral addition to the rear side of this property, as well as an interior renovation. We're seeking a special permit today because it has been deemed a pre-existing nonconforming use due to the measurements from the front of the property and the side of the property. The current building sits 29 feet and 1 inch from the front line of the property, and it should be 30. So we're dealing with a space of less than 1 foot. And the side property line sits approximately 8 feet and 2 inches from the property line, and it should be 10 feet. So it's approximately less than 2 feet. As you can see on the property, the sideline is, the side addition is going to be a bit expanded outside of the footprint of the house, but it's minimal, and where it's placed at the rear of the house, it's very difficult to see from the front of the road. So the likelihood of it even creating any type of change in the face of the property is unlikely due to the spacing on the actual property. The proposed use will remain residential, and we believe it conforms to the current bylaws. There's no issues pertaining to nuisance. There's no issues pertaining to any type of environmental issue. This is also being taken care of by Benjamin Keller of Shrewsbury, who is licensed and will follow all the regulations as proposed. And Mr. Tito was able to speak to the abutting and adjacent neighbors who signed a statement of support after reviewing this proposed plan and the proposed construction, and they have submitted that for consideration in their support of Mr. Tito's proposed project. So we hope that you consider that and approve the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister, anything further to add?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's work through our board and see what comments or questions they have. Ms. Cosette?
Again, no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy?
Nothing from me, same as the last three.
Thank you. Mr. Fulen?
I'm good.
Mr. Armenti?
Nothing from me.
And the only comment that I would have is it appears Mr. Keller is going to be very busy these days.
Yes, he will.
Okay, wonderful. Given that this is a public hearing, I'm going to give a second to see if there is any public commentary. If you'd like to raise your hand. Given that there is no public commentary, I would like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Sorry.
Mr. Mulcahy, that was Ms. Cosette, in case you don't know.
Aye.
Mr. Fulen?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
And Ms. Lynch, aye. So moved. Congratulations. I think we are good on that. Attorney Slayden, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, committee.
Okay, moving right along. Next hearing is to hear the appeal from Angram Palakar and Anushil Patil. Sorry about that. 19 Bruce Avenue, located in the Residence B1 District. This is for a special permit to Section 4B to construct a sunroom to an existing nonconforming dwelling. This is a public hearing, and it is a new hearing. Could the appellant please introduce themselves and explain their application to us?
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
And Attorney Ricker. I need to recuse myself, so I believe Mr. Nesbit will be sitting in for me.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cosette's recused. Mr. Nesbit is now in place, and I believe-
Thank you, Lisa.
-Attorney Ricker is here.
Madam Chair, Richard Ricker. I'm an attorney with offices at 11 Maple Avenue, as you know. But for the record, I wanted to introduce myself. I'm here. Angram Palakar and Anushil Patil are with us tonight to answer any questions that I may not be able to, but this is a request for a special permit. This property is a prior nonconforming property. It has had previous special permits. But as you can see from the plan, which Rowan McAllister has put up, thank you, Rowan, the deck that is on the back of the house now would be enclosed by a sunroom, and there would be an additional deck added to that, which is 6 feet by 15 feet, 11 inches. Those are, I would say, as exact dimensions as I can give you. As you can see from the plan before you, this does not increase any of the nonconformities. It's certainly ample feet away from the rear yard, which is budding a 20-foot-wide drain adjustment to boot. But it meets all the other setback requirements. This is a special permit simply because the property is prior nonconforming. This is a single-family use. The petitioners live here. They plan to stay here. And I would expect that this, being a single-family use, would not pose any nuisance by virtue of noise, smoke, environmental issues, or anything else. So I would respectfully request that you understand that also this is a single-family house, and there's no detriment to the neighborhood whatsoever. So I would ask that you grant them the special permit they're requesting. Of course, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Attorney Ricker. Can I ask, Ms. McAllister, any further comments?
I had a bit of a technical difficulty there. I think you can see the screen now. I'm not sure if it went in and out at all, but-
Yeah, we got it.
Good. Something's kind of funny with my Google Meet. So I don't know, Attorney Ricker, if you already said this, I might have missed it, but just that the applicant has changed the decks slightly?
Yes, to the 15 11 by 6, yes.
Okay, then that's all I wanted to add. No further comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go through the board, see if we have questions or comments. I'm going to go right to Mr. Mulcahy, please.
No, she's for me, same as the previous.
Thank you. Mr. Fulen?
I am good also, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Armenti?
Nothing from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Nesbit?
No comments or concerns.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I am fine with everything as well. This is a public hearing. I'm going to give a second for anybody out there that wishes to be heard on this matter, to have the opportunity, if you want to raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we have Greg Chandonay. If I pronounced that wrong, I apologize.
Yes, Greg Chandonay, 20 Bruce Ave. I live across the street. Just wanted to say, my wife and I are fully supportive of this project.
Thank you. We really appreciate when the neighbors come on and give us some insight on that. So thank you very much. That's helpful. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, I think we've heard from everyone out there that wants to be heard, so I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulen?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Mr. Nesbit?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch, aye. So moved. I'm going to need a motion to approve a special permit to construct a sunroom and a deck at 19 Bruce Ave.
I move as stated by the chair.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulen?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Mr. Nesbit?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch, aye. So moved. Congratulations. Thank you, Attorney Ricker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your new space.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
You're welcome. Okay, next up, we've got an appeal for a special permit at 250 Boston Turnpike in the Limited Business District. Sunshine Signs, Inc., 121 Westboro Road, Grafton, Mass. will be presenting. This is Section 4B to add signage to an existing nonconforming ground sign. This is a public hearing, and as such, would like to ask the applicant to please step forward and let us know what they are planning on doing.
My name is Megan Bradley. I represent Sunshine Sign and Champion Real Estate. Champion is hoping to get a sign added to the existing pylon sign near the road that is, it's already pre-existing, and we're hoping to add a small sign that does not exceed the current width of the existing signage there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. McAllister?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would refer the board to my common letter for the precise wording that's in the zoning bylaw, but I can quickly just go through this. Sign is nonconforming due to three different components of our bylaw. One is the setback. It is currently about a foot. Needs to be less than one-half the depth of the front yard. So again, please refer to my common letter for those specific measurements. But the size of the existing sign is also currently nonconforming in the frontage measurement versus the total signage area is also currently nonconforming. So just to detail those for you, but thank you. That is it for me.
Thank you. I am going to work my way through the board for questions or comments. Could I start with Ms. Cosette?
Yes, I guess I'm used to seeing a schematic of the sign before and after. Isn't there, is there anything? I'm not seeing anything in the-
Ms. McAllister, is there anything that we've got?
I'm going to look right now.
Thank you. Sorry.
I had the same question.
I can look on Google Maps, but I was hoping the appellant would submit a photo of the existing sign and how it's going to actually change. And I was a little confused. Hold on, let me look at the application.
I believe it's at page 7.
Thank you.
Of the application.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, there it is. Okay. So, yes, Ms. McAllister, if you could show that. We can't really rotate it, but there we go. Okay, perfect. Okay, so I was, do you know what the the proposed total signage square footage will be with this addition? It wasn't clear in the- the proposed total signage square footage will be with this addition? It wasn't clear in the application.
The new sign square footage is twelve square feet. Um, the one above it is twelve square feet also, and then the golden needle sign is forty square feet.
Okay.
So, what, sixty-four?
Yep, okay, and the.
If we get the um, additional sign.
Okay, so, without the additional sign, sorry, Madam Chair, without the additional sign, um, we're already at forty-plus. Yeah, so we're already over our uh, maximum total signage of fifty square feet for this property. Okay, thank you. Okay, I, I will just say, um, I was initially concerned by the uh, depth of the sign for safety coming in and out of that lot. Um, this picture makes me feel less concerned by it, but uh, that's my only comment at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy?
Um, I think, due, one to the context, um, where it is on, on Boston Turnpike, um, and also to the height of it, I don't really have any concerns. I think it's high enough off the ground. Ms. Cosette was just saying that you can see under it, through there, around it, and I think it fits in with me.
Thank you. Mr. Fulon.
I have no problem with it.
Thank you. Mr. Armenti.
Nothing for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The only comment I have is I think that Sunshine Sign always does a great job of giving us um, the information that we need, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Um, if there's anyone out there that would like to be heard on this, I'm going to open it up to the public for a moment. Okay, given that there's no hand raising, um, I am going to seek a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved. Um, looking for a motion to approve the special permit to add signage to an existing non-conforming sign at 250 Boston Turnpike.
Motion to approve as stated.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved. Thank you very much. Moving right along to our next hearing is to hear the appeal of 44 Seis Ave, located in the Residence B2 District. Brady Built Inc., 160 South Bridge Street in Auburn will be doing the presentation. This is seeking a special permit to Section 4B to construct a sunroom on an existing non-conforming house. This could be a rinse-and-repeating evening here. Um, the public hearing for 44 Seis is a new public hearing. Could I ask the applicant to introduce themselves and explain their application to the board, please?
Uh, sure. My name's Kevin Keeler. I'm chief designer for Brady Built Sunrooms. Um, I live in Northborough, Mass. Uh, we were hired by John and Valerie Gannon to build a eleven uh, point eight by twenty-one point eight sunroom on the side of the house. Um, and because of the size of the lot, when they had bought the piece of property, they, there was three pieces of property that were put together. They didn't think there would be any issues in the permitting process. Um, they are getting up in years and they're having mobility issues, and they don't have an outdoor deck or an outdoor space, so they're looking to add the sunroom to have a place that they can go out to, to feel like they're outdoors. In the permitting process, John found out that it required a special permit because it's a pre-existing non-conforming situation. The house currently sits twelve point seven feet back from the front yard setback, which is a requirement of thirty feet. So, he asked us to get involved and help him out. Um, this is a single-family use. The sunroom addition is in conforming with all the other zoning um, requirements setbacks. It's not increasing the front yard um, non-conformity at all. Um, it uh, poses no detriment to the neighborhood. Keeping in theme with the neighborhood, there's many additions in sunrooms and things like that that are on houses in the neighborhood. They spoke with the budding neighbors and no one had any problems or issues with them doing it. So, we were uh, requesting uh, permission for, to grant the special permit to proceed forward with the sunroom. They also have a, uh, even though it is a certified plot plan, it was done in two thousand and four, and we helped them update it, and so we're also asking for a waiver to request uh, from the zoning bylaw for a certified updated plot.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler. Ms. Uh, McAllister, any questions, comments?
No, just that, please vote on, on that waiver request. Just a reminder. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, given that this is a pub, uh, let's start with the board, see if there's any comments or questions from the board. Ms. Cosette?
Again, I have no comments or questions on this.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy?
Um, I have two small things that say Mr. Keeler uh, could have a future in the law if he was interested in it. And also, I'm normally a stickler for the certified plot plan. I know in the past, um, some surveyors are not thrilled when we allow hand-drawn additions to their work, but in this circumstance, I think it's fine.
Thank you. Wonderful. Mr. Fulon, comments, questions?
No, I just think those uh, Brady rooms are beautiful, so it'll, it'll be nice.
Thank you. I love mine.
Maybe Mr. Keeler has some business ahead for him. Um, Mr. Armenti?
No questions or concerns for me, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. I too have no comments or questions. Uh, given that this is a public hearing, I'd like to give a moment for anyone out there that would like to be heard on this matter. You can raise your hand or let us know you're out there. Okay, I think we are void of any comments or questions from the public, so I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
And Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved. First up, I need a motion to, I'm sorry, what am I doing here? Uh, request a waiver for a certified plot plan?
Motion to approve waiver request.
Thank you very much. Mr., can I get a second? Sorry.
Seconded.
Great, wonderful. Um, all in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
And Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved. I will need a motion to approve a special permit to construct a sunroom at 44 Seis Ave.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Have a good evening.
You as well. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we are going to hear the motion, I'm sorry, to hear the appeal, um, from Danielle Valpe, from 348 South Quincyman Ave, located in the Residence B2 District. This is for a special permit, Section 4B, to demolish and construct a non-conforming, single-family dwelling. This is a public hearing. I'd like to ask the applicant to step forward, introduce themselves, and let us know what you're looking to do.
Hi there, I'm Danielle Valpe, 348 South Quincyman Avenue. Um, here with me, I have Sean McNiff. He's my fiance, and he's at eighteen Fairfax Street, and um, we plan on going into this project together. Currently, uh, the existing home is a small cottage. It's seven hundred square feet. Um, it's non-conforming, of course, um, being a, a lake property. It's narrow and small. Um, and our plan is to rebuild, uh, going towards the water, uh, coming to where the current deck ends, and going west, uh, building the footprint out west towards um, the nearest butter over there. I believe all of uh, the footprint meets all of the setback requirements, except for the front, of course. Currently, I think it's about just over eight feet from, um, from the front here. You know, the, the proposed project um, is still further back from the road than the existing home is. Yeah, we plan on kind of going out and to the side and, and building up there. Uh, it'd be a two-story family home, and um, that's what we plan on doing there.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
Um, Ms. McAllister, any comments, questions?
No, I think the appellant covered it well. Um, just that, in a few cases, like they mentioned, like she mentioned, it's actually becoming less non-conforming um, in that side yard. So, uh, no, no comment from me on that.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Let's talk to the board, see what they're thinking. Ms. Cosette?
I just have a comment. I appreciate the becoming less non-conforming, and I, I would like, I'm interested in hearing from a butters. That's it for me for now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mulcahy?
Uh, same. Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. Mr. Fulon?
Nothing from me.
Okay, Mr. Armenti?
No comments from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have no comments as well. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone out there that wishes to be heard on this matter, you can either raise your hand or let us know you're out there, and give us your name and address, please. Going once, going twice. Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
Great. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
And Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved. Wonderful. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve a special permit to demolish and construct a non-conforming, single-family home at 348 South Quincyman Ave?
Motion to approve as stated.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Great. All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved. Congratulations to Ms. Valpe and Mr. McNiff.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Um, next up is to hear the appeal of Sean and Sarah Lawler. They're at 26 Edgemere Boulevard, located in the Residence B2 District. They are looking for a special permit and a variance to Section 4B and Section 7, Table 2, to construct an attached mudroom and garage to an existing non-conforming dwelling, and to create a new non-conforming side yard setback. This is a public hearing. Might I ask that the appellant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to present uh, tonight. In light of your schedule, I'll make my presentation brief. We live at 26 Edgemere Boulevard, which was constructed in nineteen seventeen. Uh, we love the town and our neighborhood and have no plans on moving. However, we have a grown family with limited amount of space because of a rectangular narrowing lot. The house is also the only home in the neighborhood with uh, no front door. Because it's situated sideways on the lot, and both of these issues are negatively impacting our ability to make effective use of the property, and we are asking for an area variance and special permit to help rectify these conditions by constructing a structure which suits the purpose of the garage and front door without negatively impacting our surrounding neighborhood or party and interest. And I do apologize, this is my wife, Sarah. I was nervous about the presentation, so I forgot to introduce her.
That's okay. Okay. Great, anything else?
I just wanted to see if you had any questions for us.
Sure, give us one second, and we're gonna work our way through the board. Let me first ask Ms. McAllister if you have anything further to add.
Um, I'll just quickly provide kind of a zoning uh, overview. So, this, uh, like the appellant said, this is a non-conforming house because of the side uh, and rear lot, or rear, excuse me, setbacks. Um, but they are also applying for a variance because of this side yard that will technically, due to the fact that our setbacks are measured from the primary structure, it will be going from thirty-eight feet to one point seven. So, obviously, the board can see that there is a detached garage there, so it is seven point eight uh, feet away from that side yard lot line, but uh, in terms of considerations for zoning, that side yard is decreasing substantially um, with that request for variance. So, um, that is it for me. Thank you.
Great. Let's um, walk through the board, see what we have for questions and comments. Ms. Cosette?
Yes, um, Ms. McAllister, could you put up the uh, architectural plans? I just have a question for the appellant. So, um, we're usually very, very wary of introducing new non-conformities. So, you're uh, what you're proposing to do and asking to do um, is now going to be more non-conforming. You're going from seven point eight feet to that side property to only one point seven feet, but I want to look at the plans here and see why. So, um, so you're taking, okay, so the existing house is really going to be what's over to the uh, left of this plan?
No, it would be the right-hand side.
To the right, okay. So, I see. So, on the right-hand side, that's, that's what's existing already with your bay window?
Correct.
Okay, got it. And now you'll have your front door, and, okay, this is what I wanted to understand. This part of the addition is to allow you to have a two-car garage um, that has to be so wide to fit two cars in it, and thus, that's why we're going from seven point eight to one point seven. Okay, great. I, I wanted to understand that. So, it's the ability to um, have a two-car garage on your, on your property. Thank you.
And uh, Ms. Corset, also, the neighbors have all signed off on it, don't have an issue with it. And actually, the neighbor who's most impacted by this is looking forward to me destroying the garage that's currently there.
Yes, like, I, I, I'm sure. So, beautiful plans, by the way. It's going to be uh, an improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy?
Sure. Um, I agree with Ms. Cosette that it's a beautiful plan. Um, I think the issue that I have with it is that, it's not clear to me from looking at the surrounding neighborhood that there's anything particularly unique about um, the lot. I hear what you're saying about the house being oriented sort of at a ninety-degree angle. Sorry about the cat in the background. But I also noticed that you have a pretty significant amount of, or, a very significant amount of space in the front there. And so, I'm sort of putting on my Mr. George hat in his absence, and wondering why it is that um, something couldn't be done, where you still have the two-car garage that have the front door in front of that bay window area, or something like that, that enables you to at least match the existing non-conformity, which I think would give, at, at least me, um, more comfort in terms of the plan. I would say at this point, at one point seven feet, I have a very hard time under the uh, statutory standard, which is that there has to be something unique about the soil or the shape of the lot. That, that if we did not give you a variance, it would cause an injustice, which feels like a very strong sort of uh, thing in this circumstance. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Mulcahy. Um, Mr. Fulon?
I got nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Armenti?
Um, just to echo what Mr. Mulcahy had said about the setback, um, I do think the 1.7 feet is, is um, a little bit of an issue there, but no other comments or concerns for me.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to first recognize um, that Sean is a local firefighter, so I'm sure that you want to try to stay in town, so we certainly understand that. But given that it is a um, looking for a special permit and a um, a variance, um, these are tough, these are tough hearings, but I certainly understand what you're looking to do and I do think it's an improvement and I think the fact that you don't have a front door um, could be somewhat of a um, of a uh, short, shortcoming there. So those are my comments. Um, given that this is a public hearing, I'd like to open it up and see if we have any commentary from neighbors. I'm going to give it a couple seconds and if there's neighbors out there that want to raise their hand or be heard, like to hear what you have to say. All right. Well, I think considering there's only seven of us on this call, that means that there's probably nobody else that wants to be heard on that. So I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close?
Oh, sorry. Um, Chair.
Yes.
Um, I did just want to bring up, if you don't mind, that if the board does feel that they may be moving towards a uh, rejection of their denial of variance, there could be a possibility for this to be continued and uh, the plans could potentially be revised by the applicant uh, if they so choose um, after com, further comments from the board. Um, so perhaps you could get a read on the board. I um, I'm not sure how you'd want to do that, but just wanted to jump in there before you close the public hearing.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I actually have another question.
Uh, give, Ms. Cosette, if you could hold it for one second. Mr. Cahill just raised his hand. I just want to hear what he has to say and then we'll go over.
I'll, I'll let Ms. Cosette ask her question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cahill.
Yeah, so sorry, I was going to interrupt and say, wait, I have one more question. So I have one more question for the appellant and Ms. McAllister, if you could show the plans again. I don't believe there's an aerial view. Um, yeah, okay. Uh, you could just go back one page. So I have a question for the app, applicant. Um, have you considered plans that would uh, not have the front door where it is or uh, I'll just say it that way, to, have you considered plans or did an architect give you a rendering that keeps you within the 7.8 foot setback?
Um, not at this time. We have uh, considered it in the past and spoke about it with our architect and uh, she suggested that we go forth with this and if need be, we can uh, draw up our second set.
Okay. And I have a follow-up question to that. It's hard to tell because there's no aerial view. The existing house, uh, the part where the existing house is, is that going to be flush with everything else with the garage or does that uh, jut out a bit more?
If you go to the second that has like the cutout flooring, you'll see that there, I think it's like 13 feet in front of the actual house.
Okay, so the garage does jut out. Okay, I was.
It's something that we had to do in order to make up the difference in the back. I'm not quite sure of technical terms for it. Uh, we did speak about um, moving it closer, putting it out towards the street within means, uh, but it's just an oddly shaped house right now, as I call it, the church with the A-frame and everything and adding something of that such would stick out even more and make it, I'd say, more non-appalling to the eye. Like aesthetics is, is, is a big selling point for a house too. And I just wanted to kind of make it normal, have a front door, have the number on the front door. I mean, the, it's got plenty of room on each side. If there's emergency or the fire department needs to get back there with lines, there's nothing to say that it's closed off to the, the public in any way. Um, we, we've kind of went over that before the architect and those were the ideas that we came up with.
And I have one for, one more question. Where is the uh, main egress right now? If we were looking at this schematic, where is the door to the house?
So if you looked at the bay window?
Yes.
It's literally on that AB corner, right there, the left-hand side.
Okay, I see. Where a window will be, perhaps?
Yeah, it was an existing uh, porch that my grandfather turned into part of the house. Like I said, this whole entire house is, it's 100 years old. We bought it from our mother, my mother, not our mother. That would be gross. Anyway. And um, you know, it's just pieced together over the years.
Okay.
And so it's been a little bit of pride for myself to buy this house. My grandfather grew up here and stayed in Edgemere and Shrewsbury. And this is what we want to do for our family as they get uh, older with a lot more stuff just piling up between athletics, bikes, all this other things. It's just can't find enough space to stuff stuff. And uh, plus the cars. As we get older, I don't want to be shoveling out my wife's car or cleaning it off every day before she goes and teaches Spanish. So I'd like to have a day off of doing that.
Thank you. Okay. That's it for me.
Madam Chair, I can jump back in also. Uh, looking at the street view here, one thing that um, that does sort of jump out at me is that orientation of the existing structure is pretty unique. Um, even if the lot is sort of similarly shaped. And I hear um, what Mr. Lawler is saying about particularly the A-frame nature makes it kind of difficult to add on to the front. Um, and the uniqueness of existing structures is also something we're allowed to consider. Um, I will admit that I'm still uncomfortable with 1.7 feet. That feels very, very, very tight. Um, but I think we would have sort of a hook to hang our hat on in terms of the existing structure for long. I just want to throw that out there. I don't know if that changes anything.
Uh, you know, Peter, you put into words what I'm try, I was trying to kind of say, which is there's something so unique about the structure and the topography that um, the variance doesn't feel so overreaching to me. Um, that's, that, that's my comment. Um, so I would be inclined to approve the special permit, the variance myself. Um, in order to get the housekeeping end of this worked out, I would just go on record saying that I would intend to move forward in an affirmative way. Um, can I get a feel for other members so that we know how to position this? Um, Mr. Fulon, what's on your mind?
I just was going to ask one question. Um, the, on the side yard where it's 1.7 feet, how, how much um, is the adjoining yard before uh, this structure?
Are you asking me, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so I've had the rough estimate. I'd have a stockade fence that encases their backyard uh, along with a pool. I'd say that's about seven from the actual structure, probably 10. The actual house, it jets out from the right-hand side, another three feet and then makes its way down uh, perpendicular to the um, my property line. To give you an idea of how much room you have, the gentleman had the trees ru, removed from the back of his home and they drove down the big boom truck with the tree, uh, the lift and everything and two other trucks. So I've seen streets that have shorter width than that.
And I'm not right on top of one of them.
Right.
So, so um, Ms. Chair, I would um, think that I would lean towards approving it also.
Okay. Mr. Armenti?
I'm still stuck on that 1.7-foot setback. I actually have a question for Bernie. Can you, I, I know we asked this before, but um, in the past, what has the board um, voted on as a minimum? Or like, what's the, the smallest setback that we have voted on? I want to say it was three feet.
Uh, yeah, I don't have that data offhand on me. Um, I, there isn't a minimum, so there's no statutory minimum of any kind. Um, it's been smaller than three feet, though. Um, go ahead, Rowan.
I would just add, I think, was it only last month that we approved that large deck? I don't, I don't know, Matt, if you saw it, but so it's a deck on the back uh, on the lake somewhere. That was about 0.9 feet or something.
Yeah, to the water, though. But we, we have gone short of three feet. It is a closer one than usual, but we've gone closer.
All right, so trying to land the plan on what to do next, whether to continue this or to um, Ms. Cosette, are you leaning?
Yeah, so normally, I'm, I'm always against introducing new non-conformities. Um, but uh, having the uh, well, I wish Thea Butter was here. Um, that would help me, help me. Um, I do, I think this plan is so much better than what is already there and provides safety. Um, and you, every homeowner should be able to add a garage. That's by way of uh, I'll just leave it at that. I am, I'm here looking at Google Maps and the abutting property. There is a fence there. There's um, I'm leaning towards approving it. Little uncomfortable, but.
Yep. Okay. Uh, Mr. Mulcahy, sorry, but I have to ask you where, where, where's your, your mind at? I think you kind of have already given us an inclination into you moving forward to approve. Would that be putting words in your mouth?
No, I think I, I still have the discomfort with how close it is, but you know, again, I think what's supposed to be our sort of touchstone is the, you know, the intent of the bylaw, which is to keep structures reasonably far apart so that they're not super close to one another. And the existing house next door, um, you know, as Mr. Lawler said, it's far enough away that you could drive significantly sized trucks um, through the space between the property line and the existing house. Um, and I am persuaded by the uniqueness of the existing structure, the church, as he termed it, the A-frame, making it somewhat more difficult to add on to in the front, even though there is sort of ample room in the front. Um, you know, if you want to add a front door, you can't put a two-car garage in front of the existing structure. You can't, I mean, there's just, there are limits and that's sort of what this process is designed to do, is make sure that you don't have to do something that is strange or um, absurd if, if you don't have to. Um, so I, I would lean towards approving on, on that basis.
Okay, Mr. Cahill, your hand is raised, I believe.
Yes. Um, so I just, right, so I think actually Mr. Mulcahy kind of was getting to the point I was about to say, so I don't want to reiterate it too much. Uh, I would just reiterate, though, however, Ms. Mulcahy was right about, I think, six minutes ago when he had mentioned um, that the CBA does have the power under um, chapter uh, 40A, section 10, um, to grant based on a uniqueness of a structure. So um, it says basically zoning ordinance or bylaws, so the, the board has the power to grant a variance uh, where such permit granting authority specifically finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning bylaw. Um, and then it gets into the um, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaws. So that is really what the board is looking at this evening as you weigh uh, your options here, is what is that hardship exactly? Um, are you, and do you believe that that is the hardship, the structure, uh, the uniqueness of the structure, the lot, the soil, topography, et cetera? Um, and then do you think it, it uh, derogates from the bylaws that exist today? So um, that's, just wanted to reiterate that point. Mr. Mulcahy was absolutely right and structures are covered under it. So just want to make that clear. Um, and then your comfort level is um, for the five of you to decide.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I mean, having that uniqueness of existing structure really helps me to validate it further in my mind. Um, I think there's a, enough uniqueness involved um, for me to be satisfied. Um, I think we have enough. Um.
Can I ask, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, actually, Lisa, you had um, just made mention that you had um, on the Google Maps, I was looking at the fence and Sean, is, is there going to be a fence on the other side of that garage? So the garage will be there, the 1.7 feet, and then there's a fence right there?
Included on my property, sir?
Um, just next to where the property line would be, on the left side of that garage?
Um, no.
No.
The existing fence that's already there you're talking of?
Is there a fence on that side?
There is one now, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's on my property, but that, that would not be there with the new structure.
Okay.
Okay. I think we've, I hope we've given enough, enough time for everyone to get comfortable around this. Um, I'm going to move it forward to see if we can get a motion to approve a special permit and a variance to construct an addition and garage at 26 Edgemere Boulevard. Uh, before we do that, Ms. McAllister has raised her hand, so please, Ms. McAllister.
I'm so sorry, but I think you do still have to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much. I apologize. You are correct. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
And sorry, it's been a long evening. We did wait for public comment, right?
Yes, uh, we did, but I.
Yeah, I was just really hoping the Butters were here this evening, but, okay, so, motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved. Do I get a motion to approve a special permit and a variance to construct an addition and garage at 26 Edgemere Boulevard?
Motion to approve as stated.
Can I get a second? Okay, let's do this. All in favor, uh, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved. Thank you uh, very much for your patience and um, enjoy your new house.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Oh, we have one last hearing and I so appreciate that um, Ms. Luna has been so incredibly patient here. So our last hearing is to hear the appeal of Gabriel, Gabrielle Luna of 35 Harrington Ave, unit 5406, um, regarding 27 Edgewater Ave, residence B1. Um, this is a special permit and a variance to section 4B, section, I'm really messing this up, 7B, to change lot lines to construct a non-conforming rear lot in a new single-family dwelling. This is a public hearing for 27 Edgewater Ave. Can I ask the appellant to please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will defer to Mr. Ricker, um, who is representing me on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, once again, my name is Richard Ricker. Uh, for the record, uh, I have law offices at 11 Maple Avenue. Um, Gabrielle um, uh, Luna and his wife are with us tonight. Um, to answer any questions that I may not be able to, but I'm going to try to be as brief as I can, having uh, listened to you have a long evening. Um, they presently own the house at uh, 27 um, Edgewater and, and which was a subject of previous special permits. Um, what they would like to do and uh, what this is all about is they want to buy, if you look at this map, they want to buy parcel A from the owner of um, the house at 22 Svensson. Um, and um, as a um, matter of fact, uh, he has signed on to the application as um, I think um, Ms. McAllister will, will point out. Um, what they want to do is build a larger house. Um, what they want to do is build a larger house, uh, demolish the small house, which is clearly not conforming. It's on a very small lot. Um, it has virtually no area around it. It's, um, it is, uh, about as unique as it gets down there, because it's even smaller than the small down there. Um, the, um, the plan that they had would have is to build a house as shown on this plot plan, um, on parcel A. Um, there's there's the house right there. The house would otherwise conform, uh, with with the setback requirements. Um, and, uh, the reason for the variance is because of, uh, the fact that the, although the present lot doesn't meet, uh, all the dimensional requirements, obviously, uh, neither does the new lot, once that's formed. Although it's larger, it's a much better situation, it's much better for the neighborhood, it's a, it's a, um, truly an improvement. Um, it does not meet the requirements of a rear lot under our bylaw. So, uh, because it doesn't, uh, it isn't three times the size of, uh, a single-family lot. Um, so we have a new lot that would be, uh, uh, presented to you, that is presented to you, that, uh, now still has the twenty-seven point five feet of frontage. Uh, um, uh, but what you do have is you have a lot, uh, that does not meet the requirements of a rear lot. Um, it's better, it's it's much better. I would say that, uh, the hardship is the, uh, size and shape of the lot. Uh, there's clearly, uh, you have a situation where, uh, this would be a truly an improvement, uh, but for the fact that, uh, he couldn't possibly, uh, get, uh, three times the size of a of a twelve thousand square foot lot down in that neighborhood. Um, and, um, it would have to, as I say, be thirty-seven five, uh, the size of the lot in order to comply. Uh, clearly can't do it. This is an otherwise landlocked parcel of land that they would be building on. Um, and this would be joined with the, uh, lot at twenty-seven, which is otherwise not conforming. So we have two things. We have the special permit because we're, uh, altering the nonconforming lot by, um, demolishing the house and building a larger house further back from the street. Uh, we have the variance request because of the unique nature of this whole thing being uh, is, uh, um, a a a very tough shaped lot, however, much better than what we have uh, there now. Um, so, um, I would suggest to you that this is unique. Uh, it is, uh, not something that's incidental to other properties in the the neighborhood. Uh, it does not derogate from the intent of the bylaw because it it, uh, is for a single-family use. In fact, it, uh, improves the single-family structure that's going to be basically, uh, serving, uh, this couple and their family. Um, and there would be no, uh, detriment or nuisance to the neighborhood whatsoever. This is a single-family use. Um, the other house would come down, this one would go up, it would be a single-family, uh, use and and a much nicer house and a much nicer situation. I would presume the neighbors would be very pleased about this, frankly. Um, and, um, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be pleased to try to answer them. And I know I ran, I know I ran through it quickly, but I was, I'm trying to give you guys a break so you can stay.
Appreciate that. Not to mention the fact that our brains are are fried, but we we have our best thinking caps on right now. So, um, Ms. McAllister, any further comments, questions? Well, you have questions, but you give us guidance.
Right, you can ask me questions. Uh, no, just to say that the frontage, uh, like Attorney Ricker said, is twenty-seven point five. The required frontage for a rear yard, uh, rear lot is fifty feet, um, in addition to needing to be, as again Attorney Ricker stated three times, the required lot area. So, um, I would also just confirm that we do have signatures from the owners of twenty-two Svensson Road. Um, and I don't have anything else to add. Thank you both Attorney Ricker and the applicants for waiting this long to be heard. So that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I must say also, yeah, that this is the first time that I've had another attorney have more hearings than me, uh, before your board in one night.
We did notice that, Mr. Ricker, Attorney Ricker. That's, um, okay, well, you've you're the last man standing, so that must mean something, I would say. Um, okay, let's, um, chat with the board, see what comments and questions they might have. Lisa, would you like to start it off for us?
I don't know. So I'm I'm grappling a little bit. So, um, so the appellant already owns which property?
Twenty-seven.
Yep, twenty-seven Edgewater. And what exists at twenty-seven Edgewater right now?
A a small house, uh, that that pushes all the setbacks and and lacks frontage, lacks area, lacks all the all the basic dimensional requirements.
Got it. So.
I will also note to you, um, Ms. Cosette, that, um, um, Stephen Franchito's lot, which is twenty-two Svensson, we did have a, um, plot plan done of that lot as well after after we made this plan. And his his, uh, lot, after transferring this lot, uh, if you were to allow this, after transferring parcel A, his house does meet all the, uh, dimensional requirements.
Okay, that's, that's good. Okay, um, I'm going to reserve the right to ask a question after hearing from other board members, but I I now understand exactly what the appellant is trying to do. Um, so I'll.
Okay.
That's it for me right now.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Because that's going to make me go first, which seems a little unfair.
I know, I'm so sorry. It's, I I'm just not prepared if I had maybe three more minutes.
I I think, um, I'll just sort of go through the the list. I I agree with Mr. Ricker completely that, um, the situation at twenty-seven Edgewater is unique, both in terms of the existing structure and the size and shape of the lot. I think where I don't agree is whether or not this, uh, derogates the intent of the bylaw. Uh, Mr. Ricker, I believe, is also a town meeting member, as I am, and we recently voted, um, trying to get rid of situations where you have this dog leg or pork chop, um, shaped lot where you have a very small amount of frontage and then, um, the the sort of living shape in the back and then having houses behind houses. Um, and I think that is the main sticking point for me, that, you know, in terms of more or less direct, I think, um, just, and less than a year ago, rejected as something that we're in favor of for zoning purposes. Um, and if it'd come before us a year ago, I might feel differently, but it seems like something that, um, was very recently, uh, addressed by the public. And so while I don't necessarily, while I agree that it would be an improvement over what's there, um, that's just my main concern. An apology again about the cat, there's literally.
That's okay, my dog was barking too. If I could just, uh.
Yes.
You are aware that, uh, the house at twenty-seven will come down, right, Peter?
Uh, yes, but the house next door to it, I think, is going to still be there, and the house, um, on Fench Road next door to it, me too, would be there. So you would still have a house in between two other existing houses, uh, I believe.
All right. I get your point. I I I I think we, I think that we're looking at this, uh, obviously differently, but I I get your point. Um, respectfully, I I think that, um, uh, this is a much improved parcel, once it's once it's done, so.
No, right, and I and I don't disagree with that at all, um, that the house at at twenty-seven, I totally understand the difficulty and the difficult, the basic impossibility, really, of building anything on that lot. Um, you know, I think it's, it would be an absolute.
Yard, yeah, they have no yard, they have they have nothing.
Right, I think it would be a slam dunk for a variance if you were coming before us to say, we want to knock this house down and build something else here that that is zero inches from the the sides in the rear. You know, I think it would just obviously meet that. The the more difficult question for me, um, is the issue of the lot in the rear and then building a house that's potentially nonconforming at that lot also, um, particularly in light of of just this recent town meeting vote. Um, and that's where I get stuck. I have an open mind, I'm not saying that I'm a a hard no, but, um, it would be, it's just a big hurdle for me to get over.
Um, uh, Mr. Cahill, do you have anything that you wanted to add on this? Can't hear you.
You're muted, Bernie.
Put my hand down and didn't put my, I clicked the wrong one. So my hand's not raised, but you can't hear me. Now you can hear me, my hands hopefully not raised either. Um, just to remind the board that actually, uh, this did come before you last October. I know that's seven months ago now or so, uh, for a special permit, um, on twenty-seven Edgewater. So the board actually did approve a special permit for this site. To your point, uh, Mr. Mulcahy, if they if they were to come forward, it would probably be approved, and in fact, they had come forward and it was approved. So I just wanted to remind the board, uh, that you have seen this, uh, site before, if it was looking familiar, that is the case, and, uh, apologies if, uh, we did not remind the board of that earlier. That's that's all, Madam Chair. Yeah, oh, sorry.
That was related to the lot in the rear or no?
Not to the rear lot. Yeah, that was for a change on the existing twenty-seven to knock down the current house and to build a new house on that lot. Uh, because they had, so because they weren't combining lots, they weren't creating a new lot, so those protections that you're alluding to existed, right? Um, under all sorts of different statutes. Um, the reason this is a variance is because by combining these two lots, you're creating a new lot, so those initial protections are lost. Um, and you're creating a new noncon, new nonconforming rear lot, so hence the variance. So that's why they're before the board this evening. So I just wanted to remind the board of the the first instance, um, that you had approved something last October. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Um, Mr. Fulon?
Yeah, I do remember this, um, previously, that, um, I believe the garage was under the house and, um, people were worried about water and everything else and, but, uh, I think this would definitely be better than, um, what we had previously approved.
All right, Mr. Armenti?
I'm okay right now, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, yeah, I do remember this hearing very well. Um, I'm very curious to hear what public commentary we have, but I do think we have a size and shape uniqueness to the lot that, um, I'd like to hear, um.
And Madam Chair, when I, sorry, Madam Chair, I asked if I could, if we could come around to me again once my brain kicked in.
Oh, okay, well, Lisa's brain kicked in, so here we go.
Um, so I do want, I I guess I want to say, um, regarding pork chop lots and things like that and what what was discussed at town meeting, we do have to protect ourselves against, uh, parcels like this, lots like this, but I do want to be practical here. This is, uh, this is one family, one house that already exists on Edgewater, twenty-seven Edgewater, and it's simply going to be moved back. This isn't a subdivision that's trying to get in some extra house. There is not going to be an extra house. So I just wanted to throw that out.
You did it much better than I did. Thank you.
That's a really helpful point to make, Lisa. Um, I I appreciate that.
Sure, when your brain doesn't work at this late hour, sometimes it can only handle so much, and it goes there. It's simple, it just take, makes things simple.
Right, right. Well, we're we're inclined to be, um, good listeners on this board, and we we want to help. So, um, I think the next step should be to open it up for public comments, to see who we have out there that can help us with our decision. So if there are anybody out there that would like to make a comment, I'm going to offer you the option of either raising your hand or speaking now and identifying yourself and your address to help us with our decision-making. Um, if you could give us your name and your address, that would be helpful, please.
Walter Thomas, thirty Edgewater Avenue.
Hello, Mr. Thomas.
Hi, good evening. Uh, I want to say the new proposed, uh, lot and house would be a hundred times better than the this, the one that you approved back in October. And we're, I'm a hundred percent for it. I think it'll be much better for the neighborhood. It'll also free up some air room between twenty-five and twenty-nine, where they have three inches on one side and maybe two feet on the other. So it'd be a vast improvement for the neighborhood, and I'm a hundred percent, a hundred percent for this.
Great, the very, very helpful to hear from neighbors.
Yeah. Okay, you have another neighbor here? Uh, can he speak too?
Yes, absolutely. We want to hear from neighbors, who else is out there?
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Joseph Thomas, I live at twenty-six Edgewater Ave. Uh, could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, the new proposal for this, uh, piece of, uh, the parcel that he's purchasing now, or going to purchase, is much better than he has at twenty-seven. Uh, twenty-seven is such a small little lot, it's it's not even, it's not even big enough for a doghouse. They're going to put a three-story house over there originally that they proposed in the, uh, in, uh, October. Now, uh, I know all you people on the board, if you were living here, and I got to look directly across the street, I'm twenty-six. And if you had a look at it, the originally, uh, proposed one that you people approved for, uh, uh, on twenty-seven in October, and look at a three-story over there, I don't think that you would like that. I don't think you would appreciate that at all. So, uh, my, uh, I I like the idea of him using this as a driveway, I think that's the way the proposal is, and putting a nice house in the rear, and that'll open up some of the area there. The area now is very tight. I lived in this prop, I lived on this piece of property for eighty-two years, and this is the best proposal that I've seen on Edgewater Ave in eighty-two years. So I hope that you people use good judgment and give this gentleman the proposed, uh, uh, the proposal that he wants now to put the house in the rear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
And I want to thank Tony as well. I want to thank Tony as well, and let the board know I did not pay him for that.
That is, that is one of the most compelling arguments that I think I've ever heard, eighty-two years, God bless you. Um, thank you very much for both of your time. Is there anybody else out there that wishes to be heard on this? Okay. I think that we are prepared to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
And Ms. Lynch, aye. Okay, so let's try this, see where we go. Um, can I get a motion to approve a special permit and variance to create a nonconforming rear lot and construct a single-family dwelling on a pre-existing nonconforming lot at twenty-seven Edgewater Ave?
Madam Chair?
Oh. Yes.
I changed my mind completely, Ms. Cosette makes an excellent point, and the abut make excellent points, uh, and I'm all for it.
Okay, well, let's get a, let's get a motion, please.
Motion to approve as stated.
Second.
Great, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, great, all in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch, aye, so moved, congratulations, well done.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
All of you.
You're very welcome, okay. So I I would say that tonight was a very interesting, uh, grouping of meetings. We had, we had cats, we had kids, we had cops, we had all sorts of stuff, didn't we? Firefighters. Um, so I would like to thank everybody for their patience and their diligence, um, really, and especially the staff for always guiding us in such a great, um, way, and for all the attorneys that come in front of us to to help us understand all of these, it's really helpful, so thank you. Um, okay, I would like to get a motion to close this hearing, please.
Motion to close.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Wonderful, all in favor, Ms. Cosette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch, so moved, congratulations, everyone. I hope everyone has a great evening, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.